As soon as we get a green light here, we'll be able to start. Here we go. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 18, 2019, meeting of the Edina City Council. Roll call, please. Ms. Allison?
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Saunton?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Anderson?
Here.
And Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone that wishes to adjust or amend the agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion of second to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Next matter on our agenda is community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing no one standing up, no one speaking out, no one coming forward, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda. And we have gotten into the procedural posture of having community comments responded to by our city manager or our assistant city manager, and we have Lisa Schaefer with us this evening, our assistant city manager, and she's going to respond to the community comments that were made at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We did have one community commenter at the last meeting. It was really more of a suggestion than a question, but the comment was related to traffic being very challenging on 50th and the suggestion being that it was primarily due to the Opus Corporate Campus and detours and construction and a suggestion as far as working with Met Council on different bus ferry options. And just from a staff and council perspective, yes, there are many challenges with traffic and the related construction, and we do work very closely with the Met Council on transit as well, and will continue to do so. There are a couple of transit routes in existence right now that do extend down 50th that would be in that area, specifically its routes 46 and 146, and so staff will continue to work with the Met Council on transit options.
All right, good. Thank you very much. Next portion of the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as shown.
So moved.
Second. We've got a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And now we are on to that portion of the agenda that deals with special recognitions and presentations, and Lisa Schaefer, as I mentioned earlier, our assistant city manager, is going to introduce our new Park and Recreation Director Perry Vetter. So, Ms. Schaefer.
Yes, we are very pleased to announce our new Parks and Recreation Director Perry Vetter, who we successfully stole from the city of Minnetoka. The Park and Rec Director position has been vacant since January of this year. We did a national search. It was a very extensive process, and since January, I also wanted to recognize our Park and Rec staff, Assistant Director Susan Foss, who is happily not here tonight, as she is turning over the reins to Perry. But Susan and her entire team has done a great amount of work keeping things going over the last six months, and now we are ecstatic to have Perry on staff and if he can come up and introduce himself.
Yes, I see Perry, your humility is reflected in your hiding out while Lisa is introducing you and talking about you, so nice to have you here.
Yep.
We look forward to your comments.
You correctly described me. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me this evening, not only to be introduced to the council, but also to the community, and also special thanks to City Manager Neil, who's not here, and Assistant City Manager Schaefer, and I echo the comments that were made about the Park and Recreation staff, especially in the absence. I've been very humbled. This is my seventh day of starting, and just the outpouring of support from not only city staff, but members of the community that have already reached out to welcoming to this position. So it's been very humbling. I told the staff last Monday that right now I'm in learning mode. After 21 years in Minnetoka, I had never had a first day in that time. So it's been very interesting getting to know the facilities, the places, the people, and to really start to ingrain in the community and start that journey that is to help support residents and patrons of the Edina Park and Recreation system in its whole. So I won't take up a lot of your time, but I just wanted to thank you again, the community again, and city staff for the wonderful welcome, and I look forward to serving the community and working on a lot of fantastic projects in the future.
Good. We're so pleased to have you here, and thank you for being interested and wanting to be here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, folks, you can see our chief is in his dress blues, and we've got some other folks in their dress blues. This is a really special night, the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, Mike Sotary Officer of the Year awards. Chief Nelson is going to talk about these two wonderful gentlemen and members of our Edina Police Department that do an exceptional job for our citizens and the region. So Chief, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, family, friends, city staff. Great to have you all here tonight. We got a very good turnout. So thank you for having us here tonight to present the Eighth Annual Mike Sotary Officer of the Year Award, which is sponsored by the Edina Crime Prevention Fund. The Crime Prevention Fund is a valued community partner for over 45 years. Originally, the fund was developed as a means of raising money to enable the police department to offer rewards for information to help solve more serious crimes. Over the years, the Crime Prevention Fund has expanded by providing support for underbudgeted equipment needs and community engagement programs such as K-9 program, motorcycle unit, bike patrol, foot patrol, Night to Unite, Junior Police, Citizens Academy, and our Neighborhood Engagement Officers. I sincerely thank the board and the community for your support. Little bit of history about the award. Mike Sotary. Mike served as our 10th chief from 1999 to 2009. During his tenure, he concentrated the efforts of the department to become more proactive in addressing crime trends and developing positive relationships within the community. His honor and preserving his legacy, the Crime Prevention created this award. Each year, the Crime Prevention Fund solicits nominations from the community in search of recognizing an officer who has met at least one of the following criteria: performed above and beyond department expectations, has focused on making Edina a safer community, or has focused on the advancement of the department as a whole. The Crime Prevention Board reviews all nomination and selects an officer they believe best fits the criteria and is deserving of this prestigious award. This year is a little unique. Has the Board elected to honor two officers as they both received powerful nominations outlining the criteria for the award. So I'd like to invite Sergeant Kevin Raffedall and Detective Joel Moore up to stand with Start talking about Kevin's nomination, a little bit about Kevin. Kevin grew up in Edina, and his lifelong goal was to become a police officer in the city of Edina. Kevin achieved his goal in 1997. Ever since then, Kevin has continuously focused on the advancement of the department as a whole. Some examples of his accomplishments: In 2002, Kevin resurrected the K-9 program that had been dissolved for decades prior. The proposal involved a lot of research and soliciting donors to help fund the program. As the program has been so successful, we were able to add a second K-9 officer in 2006. In 2003, Kevin applied for and received a grant to provide funding for the purchase of a Bearcat armored vehicle. At the time, it was one of only a few armored vehicles in the state of Minnesota. Although it's housed in Edina, it is frequently to apply to assist other agencies throughout the metro area. More recently, Kevin was very involved in the planning and creation of our K-9 memorial, which was completed last year and is located on the southwest corner of the property. Kevin also served as a board member and a police liaison to Cornerstone, which is an organization focused on helping victims of domestic violence. Kevin led efforts to improve police report documentation for domestic violence calls, which has resulted in increase in prosecutions and convictions. Lastly, Kevin is our self-appointed department historian. Kevin has always had an interest in the history of the department, and to hear him speak is phenomenal. Throughout the department, Kevin has historical pieces displayed, and this history helps us remember our past and realize how far we've come. Kevin is innovative and is always looking for ways to improve our department and serve our residents well. Next, I'll talk about Joel Moore. Detective Joel Moore is being recognized tonight for his performance above and beyond department expectations in making Edina a safer community. Joel previously stood here before the mayor and council as he was presented the First Annual Mike Sotary of the Year Award in 2011. That year, Joel was recognized for his hard work and dedication on a large-scale identity theft case, which led to numerous federal indictments. Detective Moore is dedicated to serving the residents of Edina and seeking justice for his crime victims. He is a type of person who will investigate every single lead possible until it is fully exhausted. Joel started the year with a missing person case where a woman reported her daughter missing and believed that the daughter's boyfriend may have had done something terrible. The case was very challenging, as there was no obvious crime scene to indicate foul play, and it was believed that the boyfriend had left the state. After hundreds of hours of investigating and coordinating with multiple law enforcement agencies, Joel interviewed the boyfriend in Little Rock, Arkansas, where the boyfriend confessed to killing his girlfriend in Edina, transporting her body to New Orleans, and then he fled to Arkansas. The boyfriend was tried in Hennepin County and was sentenced over 20 years in prison. Joel also investigated two third-degree homicide cases involving drug overdoses, in which he was able to identify the drug dealers for criminal prosecution. Lastly, Joel investigated a robbery at a pharmacy where a group of criminals came into the store late night to commit a robbery. The employees were tied up, and a large amount of narcotics were stolen. Joel's hard work and dedication led to identifying the suspects, and he linked them to several other similar burglaries in multiple states. In 2018, we did experience an uptick in violent crimes, but rest assured, Joel's on the job. So both Kevin and Joel served under Chief Sotary's tenure, and tonight we are honored with Mike's presence. I thought it would be fitting to invite Mike up to the podium to present the awards.
Thank you, Chief. Former Chief Sotary, welcome back. Good to see you.
It's been 10 years. It's good to be back for a short time. Thank you, Chief Nelson, for the invitation to come in and help recognize Joel and Kevin. It's kind of a special night. You've got a retired guy to put on a tie and come in so close to his bedtime. I always knew Edina was a great place to work. You know, I lasted 31 years here, and I enjoyed every day I came in here, but it wasn't until I left that I fully appreciated how special a place it is. I went on to work a variety of positions at other organizations at the state, county, and local level, and the one thing I learned or reinforced was that you will not find a more dedicated, harder-working, or ethical group of people than the men and women of the Edina Police Department. One reason that the department can attract the very best candidates out there, attract and retain it, is because of the support of the residents, the elected officials, and the Edina Crime Prevention Fund. So I'd like to thank and commend all of the above-mentioned people. Thank you. Like I say, the hiring process, I worked on the hiring of both these stellar individuals, can be a bit of a crapshoot, but with Kevin, it was not a crapshoot. He was a, grew up in Edina, he was alumni of the Police Explorer Post, and he had a track record with another agency as a police officer. He was a slam dunk, and as you can see tonight, that worked out very well. I have to admit, Joel was a little different story. I remember the hiring process very well. He came as a professional athlete who was making a career change, and I had trouble trying to figure out how the skills of a baseball pitcher transferred to being a good police officer. Unfortunately, one of the officers on the department really vouched for him and sent up a rocket for him, so we ended up hiring him, and I like to think we got the steel of the draft that year, as you can see, as the first and only two-time recipient of the Officer of the Year award, so. Where would you like me to hand these up? Need it for a photo op or? Kevin, is there a camera? Oops, there we go. Okay. Joel, very proud to say, congratulations.
Let's stand up. Here, let's. Kevin, it looks like at least you have some prepared remarks that you'd like to make, and Joel, you may as well.
Being the historian, I'll try to be brief. Mr. Mayor, City Council, first I want to recognize my family. My two children back here, Lucy and George, my parents, Bob and Sue, Karen and Todd, my brother Chris and Lindsay. Right here. Okay. Their unwavering support for me over the decades has crafted me into who I am today. My grandfather chief, Louis Raffedall, also served on the Brainerd Police Department, passed away before I was born, and I feel like I'm fallen in his legacy. Next, I want to thank Chief Nelson, Chief Sotary, City Manager Neil, and Assistant City Manager Schaefer. No matter what the project's been, especially requested document their history, their steadfast support is what makes Edina a premier community. As a historian, I want to point out a couple accomplishments of other people instead of talking about myself, whether it's Percy Redpath Patrol in the streets in 1930 or George Weber on the beaten morning side. We can't forget their accomplishments. The one thing I've learned about studying history in our department is we've always had a handful of what I call crime fighters. These are the men and women that we can go to when we have a tough case to solve and we need it done right. These are the people like Joel Moore, Dave Lindman, Eric Kleimberg, Brennan Dashler, Eric Amundson, Don Inger, Mike Lutz, and Wally Johnson. These are the tough crime fighters of our time. Over the time, retirees start to forget a few things. They forget the street names, they forget the businesses, and sometimes the names, sometimes parts of the mundane part of the job, but what they never forget are the men and women they stood shoulder-to-shoulder with and the victims. Most of the victims they've never met yet, they treat them like family. They treat them like their own. They come out in the middle of the night in search of the truth and be an advocate for these people. A few years ago, Mike Lutz stood before this body for the same award, and he said, "What separates Edina from everybody else is the excellence, and we demand excellence." To the young men and women thinking about working here someday, I would say, be prepared for excellence and ready for hard work. You won't find a better caliber of people in here in Edina. Looking back in history, there's two things that stand out. It's the violent crimes and domestic abuse, which we just heard about, and as Steve Marston, who just passed away, reminded me, is the number of people who die at the hands of drunk drivers in our community. And whether it's now, in our past, or in our future, this will always be a challenge. In closing, there's one person that stands out in my career that I really want to point out, one person who's given self-awareness over decades, not just to the community, but the department, and it's Lieutenant Vince Bongarts. If you could stand up. A few years ago, Mike Sotary said at his retirement party that Vince Bongarts was the definition of an old-fashioned cop, someone that lived in the community, volunteered in the community, and walked to work every day. He gave himself to make this place a little bit better place than he found it. We need more heroes like him. Thank you, Vince.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I would like to thank the Edina Crime Prevention Fund. It's very humbling to have received this award twice now. It's, you know, the first time the award was given to me for a financial crime. This time, it was a crimes against persons. The stakes were much higher last year. Unfortunately, I didn't have a lot of experience investigating violent crimes and was thrown into a doozy of one right off the bat, but I'm glad we got some resolution. When you work these big cases, you don't do it by yourself. There is a lot of support here at the Edina Police Department, everyone from Chief Nelson all the way down, all my coworkers, investigations from patrol to dispatch to support staff. When you work these big crimes, you have a lot of people, you just don't do those investigations by yourself. We also received help from the BCA and FBI, and without their help, we might not have been as successful in those investigations. This award is a little bittersweet in that unfortunately, three people lost their lives last year as part of these crimes, but I do appreciate the award, and thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks.
Chief Sotary, raise your smile, please. Thank you, Jeff. All right, thank you.
Kevin and Julie, you want to have your families come up here for a photo with Chief?
Sure.
Robertal?
Yeah, yeah. Come on, we're here. [inaudible]
They snuggle up.
One more, Governor.
No. [inaudible] You're fine. Okay, you're fine. All right. George, where's the tea just from? There we go. All right. Thank you. Thank you again. This is hot out just a little bit. There we go. Couple more, couple more. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
31st, 2018. I am not going to try to go beyond that presentation, but a wonderful award for those gentlemen. So, to start my presentation, it is important to understand the role of the auditor. It is a requirement in state law that the city prepare an annual financial statement. The city actually goes above and beyond state standards and completes what's called the comprehensive annual financial report. That particular financial report will be submitted to the Office of the State Auditor, but also the National Association for Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting. State law does require the city to hire an independent certified public accountant to audit that financial statement, and that's really the role that I have with the city. As part of the audit standards that are nationally recognized, we are required then to issue an opinion on the financial statements, but also look at the internal controls of the city specific to the financial statements and the financial reporting requirements. As part of that particular standards, we also test your compliance with laws and regulations, again, that relate to the financial reporting. Those laws typically relate to grants or funding that comes to the city that comes with regulations that pertain to the financials. Lastly, we are required to complete a, provide an opinion on your compliance with state laws and regulations. The Office of the State Auditor here in the state of Minnesota provides us with a list of Minnesota laws that we test. We don't test every state law, only those on the list, and the list does change annually depending on the auditor requirements of the state. Lastly, if the city were to receive more than $750,000 of federal awards, we would be required to complete a federal single audit. For the 2018 year, that was not required. So, as part of our audit of financial statements, of the financial statements, we do issue what's called the management report. In that management report, we provide the audit results in a format that can be easily read by the user and get a better understanding on the audit results without actually listening to me. So, in that management report, we do provide the results in a summary form. First and foremost, the city did receive what's called an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. It was the opinion you were looking for going into the process. In the PowerPoint, I use the word "clean." Clean opinion is a little more understandable than unmodified, but certainly was the opinion you were looking for for this particular financial statement. This year's financial statement opinion does have what's called an emphasis of a matter. The city did implement a governmental accounting standard, GASB Statement 75, on other post-employment benefits this year. Due to the significance of that particular change, we did highlight it in the financial statement. It doesn't really change the opinion at all, it really just provides an emphasis of that particular implementation. In my report, we also provided information that there was no findings related to the internal controls in the testing of compliance with laws and regulations that I mentioned. In my report, we also then reported that we did have one finding this year regarding the city's compliance with state laws and regulations. It is a requirement in state law that the deposits of the city are deposited and adequately collateralized, either by collateral that is provided by the bank, or you can have your deposits assured by a surety bond, which is also provided by the bank. Those particular collateral is to exceed the city's deposit amounts by 110% of the deposit balance. Our finding this year actually relates to an account that was established as part of an escrow that was not properly collateralized per state statutes. That particular finding was very unusual, it was an unusual transaction for sure, but also an unusual circumstance that the city found itself in. In my years of experience, I've been doing this for 30 years and talking with a lot of my other partners in my office, we've never seen such a situation like this. So, it's not such that it was a very common thing that was happening, it was an uncommon transaction. So, the finding as it stands is certainly a finding, but something that you should be aware of as you understand that particular item. I always say this as part of any findings or other presentation that I have related to audit presentations, and audit is really a learning experience. We take findings certainly very seriously, as the council should, but the most important aspect of a finding is what is the corrective action? And so, there is a corrective action that is provided by city staff in the documents. The city staff fully anticipates that this finding will be eliminated in the next fiscal year, in the next fiscal process. As I continue on my management report, we provide information on the planned scope and timing of the audit. It is required to be submitted by June 30th, and with your acceptance this evening, certainly you will meet the timing requirements of the city and the state. We did follow up on prior year findings. The city had one finding last year related to prompt payment of bills that we tested and followed up on and did not have a follow-up finding this year, certainly the result you were looking for. In my report, then, we do provide information on the financial results for the year. An audit really has two parts, one of which is how the city is doing from a compliance perspective, which I just addressed, and secondarily, how's the city doing financially? Certainly, the city's financial results are consistent and very solid, again, for this year. And in my presentation, we do provide some data regarding, some comparables and some data points that we talk about. The first data point I want to talk about is certainly in the area of property taxes, which starts with market values. The presentation you see here does provide information on the trends in market value. This is market value showing that 2018 market values have increased by about 7.1%, very consistent with other municipalities in the Twin City metropolitan area. That valuation is actually as of January 1st of 2017, it's almost two years old, but it is higher than, the city's values are increasing more than you see in comparable cities. Most cities are getting around the level of what we experienced back in 2009. So, your market values are recovering significantly more than other cities of comparable size in geography, in the metropolitan area. We also provide information on tax rates. Tax rates certainly are generated in terms of the capacity of market values and then generated into property tax revenues. Certainly, the property tax rates of the city have been very flat for the last two years, as seen in the graph. That being said, the city's information regarding revenues are very consistent with past information. This particular graph shows the city's revenues on a per capita basis. You can see in the particular presentation that the city received about $1,285 per resident in annual revenues for its governmental funds. A city of like size in the Twin City metropolitan area or statewide receives about $967 of revenues. That certainly is pointed out mainly because of the property taxes and the level of private tax generated based on the values you have in place here in the city of Edina. That then is provided information as it relates to the expenditures the city has. Certainly, the governmental funds expenditures on a per capita basis show that the city spends in 2018 about $1,336 per resident. That can be broken down into about $850 per resident on an annual basis, using current costs. Capital outlay can go up and down each year depending on the size of the city's projects and things that are ongoing. And then debt service, you're spending about $145 per resident in debt service. Couple of items I want to point out here. The city does generally have higher-than-average spending in the area of public safety, mostly because of the city's full-time fire department, which would generate additional costs specifically to that full-time status. One other item I want to point out is the debt service number. The debt service number is important for me as an auditor, as I tend to look at that as an overall debt management indicator. You can see that the city spends $145 per year in debt service, which is very comparable to other cities statewide, so it does show good financial management and good debt management overall. We also provide information on individual funds in this presentation. The first one I want to talk about a little bit is the general fund. The general fund is guided by a fund balance policy. The city's fund balance policy states that there's a desired range of fund balance of 42% to 40% of really overall operations. That particular policy is in place because the city's only receiving property tax revenues twice a year. Thus, they need almost a 50% operational fund balance to make it from one day, from, you know, over that six-month period of time. So, at the end of the year 2018, the city's fund balance was roughly 56% of fund balance, which is about $2.7 million above the range. The city council, as well as city administration, does use that number for future budgeting tools and future budgeting aspects that will be provided as the year goes along. The city's financial results, both in the revenue area and expenditure area, do meet budget projections. The city does an excellent job of providing budgeted information and meeting those expectations with its overall financial results. Couple areas that stand out to us in terms of overall results. The city's license and permit revenues were higher than budgeted for 2018, which is consistent with all of the metropolitan area cities that we work with. The city's overall metropolitan area construction and projects are well above averages throughout the metropolitan area. In the expenditure category, you can see here the city's expenditures were less than budgeted by about 1.5%, which is very close to what was expected. In almost every category within the city's budget was a below-budget expectation, which shows very good fiscal management. This particular graph that is in the PowerPoint does show general fund expenditures on a functional basis. One thing that stands out to me when I look at this graph, well, first of all, there was a change in divisional responsibilities, and you can see the Parks Department has a blip there in 2018, and the Public Works Department has gone down due to some changes in categorizing personnel this past year. But what does stand out more noteworthy is in the area of public safety. Public safety costs in the city are increasing. As the area, throughout our metropolitan area, this particular public safety graph is very similar to what we see throughout our city clients. I'm a fan, I guess.
Cheering your report.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll move on to the enterprise funds. The city's enterprise fund did have a very positive year. You can see that the city's enterprise funds do include the utility funds, the liquor fund, and a number of other funds, including the golf course. What does stand out to me is the positive results, certainly in the utilities fund and the liquor fund, and you will note the decline in the golf course, mainly due to the closure of that golf course over development for the last few years. We do provide individual information on funds. I don't need to get into these funds in detail, but it does show to me on this particular graph, the operating income and the positive results in the city's utility fund, probably more noteworthy is the positive results in the liquor fund. You can see the liquor fund's green line, which is operating income, has steadily improved since a downturn in revenues in 2015. One number that stood out to me when preparing for this was the gross profit percentage. The gross profit percentage in 2018 was 29.4% in the liquor fund, which compares to an average profit of 26.2 over the previous five years. So, certainly, the liquor fund operations are improving dramatically and should be very much a highlight of the financial results for this year. My management report does provide a lot of other information on enterprise funds, as well as individual information on those funds. We do provide legislative updates so that retain to financial reporting if you're interested. We also highlight accounting and auditing issues that are forthcoming. The GASB 78 information that I addressed that was implemented this year has been in my report for the last several years, and there will be more forthcoming for finance staff to deal with. So, in summary, I was able to issue a clean opinion on the city's basic financial statements. We had the one emphasis of a matter for implementation of accounting standard. We had no findings to report for internal controls, and the one finding related to collateral that I addressed earlier in my presentation. And certainly, the city's financial results are continuing to improve, and really, the city's in a very solid financial condition. Lastly, I wanted to point out, just my last bullet point, is what I see as an auditor, which I think is very, very important, is as we ask questions and we go through our audit process, we continue to see the staff's desired need to improve and to continually improve not only the financial projections, but the internal controls and improve the operational controls of this organization. I continue to get calls on the finance staff about that particular area, asking what other cities were doing in a particular area, in a particular division within their city as it relates to others, and that's important as an organization to be continuing to improve, and I see that each and every year. So, with that, I'll open it up for questions that you might have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Eikten, yeah, thanks. Questions for Mr. Eikten or comments? Member Brindle?
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
I have two questions from the management report. It's just two clarifications. On page eight, below the table that appears on that page, the city has historically received more of its government fund revenue from property taxes than the average Minnesota city. So, where does the average Minnesota city get its revenue, if not from property taxes?
I'll answer this question, but a lot of the other cities are receiving significantly local government aid or intergovernmental revenues.
Ah, I see.
That would sway that average.
Like fiscal disparity?
Fiscal disparities would be part of that. You might be getting other police aid, state aid, lots of other aids. If you look at that particular graph, the city, the intergovernmental revenue on that particular page is $147 to $152 per resident. The city is receiving 98, which actually probably includes some one-time grants. You're probably normally a little less than that.
Okay.
But local government aid is probably the biggest piece.
Great, which we don't get.
But you're getting none of that.
Right. And then, on page 10, this deals with the general fund balance and the fact that we're above our goal of 42% to 47%. And I guess, I don't know if that warrants a finding. I don't think it's strong enough to warrant a finding, but it is a policy of ours, and I guess my question is almost more for staff than it is for Mr. Eikten, and that is, since this sets us up for budgeting in the future, are we looking at more so that we just have too much this year, or is this a trend that is going to continue with the continuing increase of taxable market value?
Sure, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Brindle, I can answer that. So, the city's fund balance policy is to retain 42% to 47% of next year's property tax levy for fund balance or for cash flow purposes. So, we are on the conservative side and set aside 47% of next year's property taxes and fund balance to cover expenses and cash flow. So, we did end in a great position in 2018, and that extra amount is, what we'll come back to the council here in a few months, is the surplus and decision to move that to the construction fund or use it for other purposes.
Okay.
As far as whether it's a trend, Jim had mentioned our building permit revenues were up and above budget. It can be a volatile category, you know, so that's one reason we have an increased fund balance this year, and that we're also slightly under budget in expenditures overall in the general fund. So, hard to predict whether that's going to be a continued trend.
Sure.
But certainly, positive results this year.
Okay, thank you.
I will add to that, if I could. It is a consistent policy of the city, but it is also a consistent policy of all cities within the metropolitan area as to having a policy of this nature, but also to react in the manner that you're reacting in terms of bringing it back to the council and talking about it and including it in the budget process. So, it's a very normal process that we see.
Great.
In every city.
Manager Schaefer?
Thank you, Mayor, and I would also add that it really is what we would like to see, and when several years ago, we made the decision not to include building permit or liquor revenue into the general fund expenditures, and instead to hope for surplus that we then can use and eventually transfer into capital improvement if it's not needed. So, ideally, we do want to see some sort of surplus, and so this would be just a normal process, and you'll see, I believe, in August or September, we'll be coming back for decision to transfer the funds.
Great, thank you.
Right. Other questions for Mr. Eikten or for our staff, or other comments on the report? So, I'd like to commend our staff. I noticed that from the Governmental Finance Officers Association, we received another certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. You had mentioned, Mr. Eikten, the liquor fund, and I think beyond our finance department, which has a significant role in the financial prosperity of our town, I also want to congratulate Ms. Schaefer and Manager Neal and the folks that run the Edina liquor operation, and also the task force that we put in place, because you can look at that bar chart, and you can distinctly see that in 2015, when we received some significant competition in the marketplace, that our revenues dropped essentially in half to a net of about $650,000. We learned a lot from that experience, and we learned to be a better competitor, and now we are back in 2018. I could hear Councilmember Sotan exclaiming to himself next to me here, wow, yeah, that we have now gotten back to the point where we're at $1,004,000 in net revenue off of our liquor store operations, despite probably increased competition over what we had in 2015. So, really, quite a great accomplishment by our staff.
To the bottom line of our taxpayers.
Right. It's used for things that support so many things in our town, and for taxpayers, we would remind them that every $300,000 of revenue represents about 1% of the general levy. So, we've got $1,004,000 to work with there, and that, we don't take all of it, obviously, but it gives us the ability to keep taxes down, even though we're growing our tax capacity over time. So, kudos all the way around, I would say. Anyone else? Comments? Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Eikten. Thank you. Alright, that completes the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. We're going to move on to public hearings. We've got three public hearing matters this evening. All of them relate to proposed suspensions of liquor licenses.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we need to vote to adopt the audit findings.
Oh, alright, very good, thank you. So, we've got the comprehensive annual financial report for the year-end of December 31st, 2018. Is there a motion to accept the 2018 comprehensive annual financial report?
Second?
Got a motion, second, to accept the 2018 comprehensive annual financial report. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. And now, onto public hearings. All of these involve things that we don't like to see happen in our community, proposed liquor license suspensions for...
We need to vote to adopt the audit findings.
Oh, all right. Very good. Thank you. So we've got the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ended December 31, 2018. Is there a motion to accept the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report?
Second.
Got a motion second to accept the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. And now onto public hearings. All of these involve things that we don't like to see happen in our community, proposed liquor license suspensions for violations of our liquor ordinance in terms of minors. And you are going to introduce this matter. I think Clerk Allison is going to handle the first matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, there are three liquor license suspension public hearings before you this evening, and they're before you because Minnesota statute states that licensees must be given an opportunity for a hearing when being charged with a violation. Also, Edina's penalties are presumptive civil penalties, requiring council's approval for each violation. Of the three establishments, only one representative is here tonight to address the city council, Mr. Yasef Dawood from Edina Market in Delhi. So when we get to that public hearing, he would like to address the council. I'll turn it over now to Lieutenant Conboy, who is in the audience, and Lieutenant Conboy will explain the alcohol compliance check process that is performed by the Police Department, and also he will be available to answer any questions that you have regarding the violations during each public hearing.
Okay, good. Thanks, Clerk Allison. And Lieutenant Conboy, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Just a brief synopsis of how we do this, the alcohol compliance checks. So twice a year, we pick two random dates that we're going to go out and visit each liquor establishment within the city. We send out notification approximately anywhere between three weeks and 60 days to each establishment, letting them know that we will be completing the compliance checks. Then on the date that we choose, we have several plainclothes officers who visit each establishment. Each set of those officers has a person who's under 21 with them, and we attempt to make a purchase of alcohol with our decoy. And if they are successful, as far as the sale occurs, we let the person who sold the alcohol know who we are. We identify ourselves. They're issued a citation, a criminal citation for furnishing alcohol to a minor. And if they successfully pass, meaning they don't serve the alcohol, we also let them know who we are, identify themselves, and that they did successfully pass the compliance check. So on May 14th, we did complete compliance checks, and we did have some violations that could ultimately result in suspensions, which is why we're here tonight. So I can answer any questions from you all, or if the representative of any of the liquor establishments have questions, I can answer those, too.
I think we've got three of these matters in front of us. I think we should take them one at a time, and, yes.
I have a general question. So this is my third year on the council.
Yes.
And pretty sure this is the first time I've seen this in my packet.
Right.
So does that mean twice a year, for the first two and a half years, everyone complied?
No, it does not mean that. If there is a first violation, we send out notification, and the city clerk might be able to explain a little bit better the process. We send out notification to the businesses, but it's done on the city hall side, so I'm not sure if they have an option to opt out.
We may not have handled the process correctly in the past, in that because the penalties are presumptive, each violation is supposed to come before the council. You issue the liquor license, and therefore you are responsible for approving each violation, except for a first violation. The establishment can waive their right to a public hearing, but each violation thereafter is supposed to be approved by the council during a public hearing.
All right. Other questions for Lieutenant Conboy at this point in time? Otherwise, I'm going to take them one at a time, and I think we should handle the Smashburger matter first. Both the first two are second-time violations, and the third matter is a third-time violation.
Correct.
Or asserted violation. Okay, go ahead on Smashburger.
Did...
So, yeah.
Do you want to explain what happened?
On May 14th, as I understand, that alcohol was sold to an under-21-year-old police decoy.
Correct.
At Smashburger, and it was the second time this had occurred.
Yep, the, yeah.
And so what are you recommending, under our administrative penalty matrix?
Basically, what it says is for the second offense, it's a $1,000 fine and a, is it a two?
Three-day suspension.
Three-day suspension, sorry. Three-day suspension. So that would be the recommendation for Smashburger.
All right, okay.
And I do have the other violations. I wrote down the dates of their occurrences in the past.
Okay, all right. Well, let's open this matter up for public testimony with respect to the proposed liquor license suspension and potential fine of Smashburger. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify with respect to this proposed imposition of penalty? Both are suspect to suspension of liquor license for three days and a $1,000 fine. Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
We had a motion second to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Is there a motion approving Smashburger's three-day liquor license suspension and $1,000 fine for their second liquor license violation within 24 months?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second with respect to the...
Can I just make a point before we vote on that?
Sure, we can. Action stated, and now a discussion.
Okay. Just wondering if we do any remedial training or other kind of in-service for the employees or management of any of these licensees when they get to this second or third?
To my knowledge, we don't. They have to follow the city ordinance, which talks about, they have to have a certain percentage of their employees trained at any given time, and there are certified programs that they have to go through to make sure that their employees are following more rules than just checking IDs and making sure that the person buying is over 21. There's a lot more information that the employees are given, but that's not handled through the Police Department.
So we allow them to go through a certified program, and then we check to make sure there's...
Initially, yes. When their liquor license is granted, they do go through a training session. Then they have to show proof that all the employees have been trained, but after that, we do not do any kind of remedial training or follow up with them.
And just another follow-up question, and it might be for Clerk Allison or Lieutenant Conboy, or perhaps for the city attorney. When we get around to the renewal at the end of the year, is that a condition we could add for some special training if we went to a renewal for somebody who's had two or three or more violations?
You certainly could.
Okay. So something to think about when we get back around.
Yes.
All right, good, good thought. Any other discussion before we vote on this matter? Okay. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. The next matter is with respect to Buffalo Wild Wings and alleged second liquor license offense at that establishment within the past 24 months. Lieutenant Conboy?
Correct. On May 14th, at approximately 7:19 PM, our officers went in in plainclothes and attempted to make a purchase of alcohol with a person under 21. That purchase did occur, and so therefore, their last offense was November of 2018. So this would be their second offense within 24 months, so the recommendation would be $1,000 fine and the three-day suspension.
All right. In the prior matter and in this matter, you made a recommendation as to when that suspension should occur. In this particular circumstance, it was Monday through Wednesday, June 24th through the 26th, for the three-day suspension. Any particular reason why you chose those days or why you're recommending those days?
Those dates were actually written by our assistant city clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did choose those days just to make it less impactful to their sales instead of doing a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday suspension instead, if the council is agreeable to those days.
Okay. Do we know off the top of our head what day of the week the 14th of May was?
I don't. Do you?
I could look at my phone.
It was a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, all right.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Conboy on this matter? I'm going to open this up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding the proposed three-day liquor license suspension and $1,000 fine for the second liquor license offense within 24 months for Buffalo Wild Wings? Hearing nothing, seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion second to close the public hearing with respect to this matter. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Is there a council member who wishes to make a motion approving Buffalo Wild Wings' three-day liquor license suspension and $1,000 fine for a second liquor license offense within 24 months, and also have that period of suspension run from Monday through Wednesday, June 24th through the 26th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Further discussion?
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Let me go back to Smashburger for a moment. Clerk Allison or Lieutenant Conboy, you had suggested the same period of suspension for them, June 24th through the 26th, 2019. Do you need a motion on that particular part of it as well, do you think?
Not necessarily, no, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go on to Edina Market and Delhi Liquor License, proposed suspension of their license for a third alleged offense, and the proposed suspension there would be for seven days, and no fine, only a fine of $2,000. Okay. Lieutenant Conboy?
Correct. On May 14th, at approximately 6:54 PM, two of our plainclothes officers brought a person under 21 with them into the Edina Market to attempt to purchase alcohol. The person was, sold the alcohol. So we had two violations in 2017, and then last month, which would make it the third violation within 24 months, and according to the pay schedule, it says $2,000 fine and a seven-day suspension.
The order, I think, is here, Mr. Yasef Dawood, and I think I'm going to open this up for public testimony, and you're sure welcome to come forward and express your thoughts to the council. I know you have done something in writing, but I know that that was mostly to...
What do you mean?
Let us know that you were going to be here to talk about this situation. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
And would you please give us your full name and business address, please?
Sure. My name is Yasef Dawood. I'm from Edina Market in Delhi, 7102 Amundson Avenue, Edina, Minnesota, 55439. I'm here because of a couple of things. We are a small business, and I have some expect because we train people very frequently with orientation. We teach them how to look for the IDs and so forth. This particular situation, Mitch looked at the ID and didn't really focus on it properly, and he ended up in selling it. We looked at the financial piece for our business model, and we think historically our sales have really dropped significantly since the Sunday liquor sales have changed. Before, there was no Sunday liquor. Now, Sunday liquor is available. So our business has really tremendously took a sales dive in our business. So we looked at the whole picture, and we, as a team, decided to give up our liquor license to, we don't want to carry that anymore. The reason we are doing that because it's liability issue, plus it's more not financially practical for the sales that we have done. And also, the companies like Beer Company, Budweisers, or Coors, or other company, they do not make 3-2 liquor beer anymore. They start cutting it down. For our business, 3-2 beer is a very low-end beer. It's not a whole liquor or wine. It's a low-end convenience store beer. So we decided to see that it's not really a... So when we tried to buy products from them, they say we don't carry that anymore. We started to cut down. And Minnesota is the only state that carries 3-2 beer in the state of Minnesota. So I don't know how that will change down the road. In this particular situation, we decided not to, we want to let our beer licenses, voluntarily give it back to the city. And I request, humbly request to the panel, if you can be kind enough to eliminate our charges of $2,000 that have a significant impact on the business, and we decided to just stay away from beer in our operation. So that's what we're thinking that we have in our city, because the trend has changed in our store model. We are not seeing too much traffic for beer. We sell very less beer as compared to what we used to before, and we've been in business in 2009, and the trend has significantly took it down. The other suggestion I'd like to make to the panel is, instead of 24 months, I'm not saying because of me, I'm saying because of, as a whole, other businesses. You should have the, instead of 24 months, it should be 12 months. That way, we make mistakes, or we do the training, or we do, you know, tell people, teach them. One year is good enough rather than going back to two years. It is very hard for a small business to capture that big amount of penalties. That's what my suggestion, in the future, something to think about. You know, for me, it doesn't matter now, so I'm thinking in terms of other businesses. 24 months is too far. If you keep it within the year, 12 months, then it's much more, if they do mistake, it will become much stronger for them to come back and solve the problem within the operations.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Dawood. Anybody on the council have a question for Mr. Dawood at this point in time? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Clerk.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify regarding this matter involving Edina Market in Delhi? Okay. I don't hear anybody, and I haven't seen anybody coming forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second to close the public hearing regarding Edina Market in Delhi. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Council discussion on Mr. Dawood's proposal.
A question for staff. Is, in the matrix, where does it go after three violations in 24 months?
It's a revocation.
And the fourth one?
Yes.
Within 24 months?
Yes, councilmember.
And does the revocation come with any fine?
It does not.
So I, I mean, if, it seems to me that the purpose of the fine is to encourage compliance, and if the applicant, if the licensee is volunteering to have it revoked, and there's a record of that so that it's not reinstated at another time, then we've accomplished what we want to, which is not having a licensee that isn't able to control the sales. So I'd be, that'd be acceptable to me.
Yep.
Other thoughts from councilmembers?
I'm okay.
It's a good analysis, I think.
Yeah.
I'd be comfortable with that notion as well, the surrendering of the license.
Well, I think it's important that we have a record of the revocation, just so that if there's a future application that comes up in the system as a license that's been revoked, and we can treat it appropriately at that time.
Okay. So entertain a motion to revoke the Edina Market and Delhi liquor license immediately and not impose the suggested matrix penalty of $2,000.
So moved.
Yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Thank you, Mr. Dawood, for coming this evening. You'll need to clear out your inventory tonight. All right. We're going to move on now to the, that completes the public hearing portion of the agenda. We're going to move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and the first matter in front of us this evening in this portion of the agenda is second reading on the residential rental housing licensing ordinance. And Jeff Brown, our community health administrator, has this matter. Mr. Brown, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hublin, members of the council. I just have one slide, just to recap the process of this item so far. You can see the items from 2018 and the 2019 work plan, basically about the development of this item. We were here on May 21st to do the first reading of the ordinance and did a more extensive presentation at that time. Tonight is the second reading and the vote, and then we would, if it passes, we would do the implementation, and the ordinance would go into effect in November. Also, tonight, Sergeant Brindle... Also, tonight, Sergeant Brandon Husky from PD, Fire Chief Tom Schmitz, and Stephanie Hockinson from our planning department, a former housing manager, are here to answer any questions as well, so.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
That is the award. One, a one-slide presentation, Mr. Brown. Well done.
Who goes?
And no pictures, no glossies, no bars, no charts.
We had a good conversation last time, so.
We might get your picture up here with the mayor layer. All right. Anybody have any questions, comments? We held this over for a reason. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion approving the second reading of ordinance 2019-06, amending the Edina City Code, Chapter 10, concerning rental licensing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance 2019-06, amending the City Code, Chapter 10, concerning rental licensing. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just want to, I just want to just comment a little bit on the, on the history of this discussion. It really was brought forward by residents who live in a neighborhood with a number of properties, in this case, single-family homes that are rented, and, and just, just making sure that renters know that they're moving into a property that is safe and complies with standards for, for safety, and that landlords have something to comply with. And so it just, it, for me, it's kind of housekeeping, to be sure that the housing available in our community is safe and ready for occupation, and that the people moving in can feel comfortable with that and confident with that, and the landlords can also feel comfortable and confident that what they are providing is safe and, and comfortable.
Member Fisher?
I just want to say that when this discussion first started, I don't know how many months ago, I was in the camp of, you know, do we need to, is something really broken here? Do we really need to be trying to fix something that we question if it's broken? And you ever, like, when you're shopping for a car, all of a sudden, that's the car you see everywhere you're looking? It's sort of that way with me. As we've started talking about this, I get emails, or calls, or whatever, about these different issues in the community, and I keep thinking, wow, if we had that ordinance, that would take care of that. And it's been amazing how many of those little instances have happened, even since we've had this conversation. So, thank you to all of you who have been pushing this. I'm, I'm a believer now.
Yeah. Well said, Member Fisher. Anyone else? Member Anderson?
I'm a huge proponent, so I'm glad that we're putting this in place, and as we get closer, implementation, it just occurs to me that we're going to have to discover where the single-family rentals are. That's going to be a hard thing to absolutely put your finger on. Sometimes they're rented for short periods of time, we probably can overlook that, but there are a fair number of properties in our town that have been acquired for long-term holds or maybe eventual tear downs. And I think we've had at least one letter from a resident with several single-family rentals in their immediate neighborhood, and she was expressing a level of concern. So I, it's a question mark. I'm not certain how that's going to happen just yet, but something to think about, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, there was some very good work done here. I also was in the same camp, wondering whether we really needed to do something, but I think with our police department, our fire chief, our housing folks, our community health person, all speaking in favor of this, it was a pretty compelling case by the time we got done with our analysis. So, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then we are on to 2019-2020 student commission appointments, and Member Brindle, you led that.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Mr. Mayor?
Hello. Excuse me.
One more motion on that item.
Oh, okay. A motion to approve the summary publication of ordinance 2019-06. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the summary publication of ordinance 2019-06. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Thank you. Clerk Allison. I don't recall that we've had to approve summary publication before. Interesting. Anyway, now we are on to 2019-2020 student commission appointments, and Councilmember Brindle will lead the discussion on that matter.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of working with Jan Seidman, who is a former member of the Edina Human Rights and Relations Commission, as well as Jasmine Brett Springer, who is a current member of the Human Rights and Relations Commission. So the three of us interviewed 26 students. There were five sophomores, 12 juniors, and nine seniors. There was a nice diverse mix of students, a variety of talents, interests, ages, and backgrounds. So, it was interesting to see, I kind of make tick marks, so three of the students stated art and culture was their number one, five said health, 10 said energy and environment, nine said human rights and relations, two said heritage preservation, 11 said parks and rec, five said planning, and one said transportation. So we were out to sell transportation. And, and we did. We successfully seated 18 students, so we seat two students on each commission. The goal is to have a nice diverse mix on each commission, but really, the priority is to place people where they are going to be able to get something out of it and contribute something toward it. So we had, you know, these young people, if you're worried about what's coming up, all you have to do is interview some of these kids, and you realize, we're really in good shape. Many of these students are already doing good things in the world, and when, when I say world, it's way beyond the borders of the United States that they are working. Some have visions for our city, such as a racial equity summit and a climate summit. One student wrote and published a book, which is available on amazon.com, and she uses the funds to send two children to school in India, and she's in high school, and she's a junior. One student continues to work with his older brother, providing eyeglasses to young people in Tanzania and, Tanzania and India, and one student passionately rides his bike to school every day, and he has done this since he was in first grade. So you know what commission he's on. He's on transportation, or he will be, once we, once we finish our recommendations. But what we do as, as an interview panel, is that we interview all the kids, and then we sit down and say, all right, where are, where's the best place for, for this person? One has worked in planning in New York City. Another has done a variety of medical projects in different places. It's unbelievable. I think, where was I in high school? I was not there. But I will read down the recommendations from the, from the report that is provided in our packets, and I'm going to butcher some names, so I'm going to apologize in advance. Okay, so Arts and Culture Commission, we are recommending Atman Jahar Ghardar and Shreya Konkamila. For Community Health Commission, we are recommending Madeline Olson and Amy Wang, with alternate Gavin Richards. For Energy and Environment Commission, we are recommending Anna Martinez and Chloe Mayner, with alternate Katherine Kaiser. That was very difficult. We almost wanted to make another student position on energy and environment. That was very difficult. Heritage Preservation Commission, Arjun Maheshwari and Amelia Bowles. Human Rights and Relations Commission, Shinbi Waldron and Mithali Iyer, with alternate Simran Samba. Parks and Recreation Commission, Bryn Osborne and Zoe Leelos, with alternate of Zachary Slavitt. Again, we would have loved to have had another position to fill, because these are all so strong. Planning Commission, Isabel Melton, Ananth Velavuli. Transportation Commission, Simon Vanel and Taden Erickson. So, just a note, Isabel Melton is the granddaughter of Hope Melton. She will be a senior. The Planning Commission is, is a lot of work, and so what we do there is, we look for a student who has been serving on planning to serve a second year, and then bring in a younger new student, so that student who is entering their second year on planning can mentor the younger students, so that they kind of leapfrog and, and help mentor a young person in a year, because there's a lot of work on planning. So that is the slate for the student commissioners, and I will make a motion that we approve the appointments of these 16 student commissioners and their alternate commissioners.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to appoint the students designated by the, the interview group, the interview team, led by Councilmember Brindle. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Councilmember Brindle's recommendations and the group's recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Great, great students in there.
And thank you to MJ Layman and to Heidi Lee, who helped to administer that.
All right. Thank you. And now we are on to sketch plan review for 4404 Valley View Road, and Director Teague has this matter.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is a site where we've previously approved a project for a two-story, four-unit condo building. This is part of the Edina Flats project. The applicant, they've, they've stated they can't financially make that work, so they're asking for a sketch plan review to do a two-story, about 6,400 square foot office and retail building, parking on the main level. The applicant will describe it in more detail. There is an, a, some of the key issues with this one, there is an elevator that goes up to a deck on the, on the, on the roof, that would exceed our height limits of 30 feet for this site. It's 38 feet tall, somewhat similar to the New Horizon facility that's being remodeled next door. They're short parked by about 15 parking stalls. Staff has some concern about the potential of that much square footage, where those extra cars park, parking study would be required as part of any formal application. Lastly, the building you'll see in the presentation does extend into the right-of-way. Staff would recommend that the building come out of the right-of-way, reduce some of the square footage, maybe we can be closer to meeting those parking requirements. But with that, Dave Rimmick and Ken Piper are here to present the project, and at Planning Commission, they went about 10, 15 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to that, can I just ask Carrie for a brief reminder of where we are on the next-door property, the daycare?
Yeah, it's my understanding that they've been working with the building department, and they're, they'll be getting their full permit soon.
And you, can you remind me just the, the details of the approvals that were on there?
Yeah, there was a couple of variances. There were, I believe, maybe one or two parking stalls short, but there was a variance on the height to construct an elevator that got the children up to the second story, where there would be a deck. So just a portion of that elevator and stairwell exceeds the 30-foot height limitation for that site.
Do you recall by how much?
It was, I don't know the exact number, it's somewhat similar to what you're looking at this evening.
And that was an existing structure that was being retrofitted, not a new building?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Rimmick and Mr. Piper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Dave Rimmick with City Homes. Our principal business address is 3918 Sunnyside Road in Edina. So I can go ahead and get started with a brief overview of what's going on at 4404 Valley View Road. So we are, as Carrie mentioned, proposing a two-story building, total square footage of about 6,400 square feet, enclosed parking at grade, along with a 1,900 square foot retail space, and then a second level that would be about 4,500 square feet of office space. The site is currently part of the Edina Flats project, which was five buildings in total. Buildings two through five are currently under construction. This site would have housed Building One, which, as was mentioned, would be a two-story, four-unit condominium with underground parking. The construction costs that will be, and we know this because the four-unit building is very similar to Building Two, which is a six-unit building, it's the same footprint, but goes up a level. The underground parking and the requirements around the engineering there and fitting it on-site is a very complicated structure to build, and without the additional two units to kind of spread that cost over, it's essentially the same construction, it's just not financially feasible, and so we are looking to revisit and propose a different approach for the property. We believe that this commercial building will enhance the neighborhood, and will also be consistent in terms of use with other retail and commercial buildings in the Wooddale and Valley View Road area. I'll turn it over to Ken to talk through the site plan and some other more technical elements.
Good. Thanks, Mr. Rimmick. Mr. Piper, would you please give us your full name and business address?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Ken Piper. I'm with Tanic Architects, 118 East 26th Street, Minneapolis. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. As Mr. Rimmick mentioned here, the subject site is right here, Valley View, Oakdale. And what we're proposing now, again, I want to thank the Planning Commission for, we went through with the Planning Commission on two occasions, and they had some very helpful comments, and so we've massaged this through that and incorporated those comments in what you see today. And primarily, what we have here is, we have a first level here. The site itself slopes down from this corner here on Oak Lawn, down to a low point, a difference of about four feet. And so what we're doing as part of putting, siding the building, is we will have ingress off of Valley View. We have 21 parking stalls that we've been able to fit in here, but essentially, to get our ground level or main level elevation, so that it times out with the sidewalk in this area, what we're able to do then is really, at this corner here, we're able to drop the parking about four feet. Now what that does is, this corner right here, which is the northeast corner, then appears on the exterior to be only about eight feet above ground here. And that's important, because we've got a seven-foot setback, but obviously, here, there's a sensitivity to the existing adjacent single-family residents here. As part of that, then, what we're doing is, as we get to the second floor, which would be the habitable floor in this corner, we are actually stepping the structure, proposed structure back 14 feet, and then we will rise to the second level here. So at this point, we're again 14 feet plus seven feet away from our property line, and at this corner here, we're at an elevation of 20 feet above grade. Going back to the first floor, then, what we're doing here is, we see this as a great opportunity in going through the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan, and some of the objectives and guidelines that are in there. We see that as very helpful here. We're looking to really engage and activate this corner here. And so what you'll see here is a first-level space of about 1,900 square feet. We are also suggesting We are also suggesting that there be a plaza or patio space that would interact with this space but also engage this corner. There are a number of utility boxes that sit here on-site. Now, those would need to be moved to create attractive landscaping here. In addition to that, in following the WVV Small Area Plan, there's an opportunity here as in the gateway, the east gateway, to address some signage and create some sort of an element there that would then address this corner. So again, this area here would be our access to the second floor. And then, as was talked about earlier, we are trying to engage the roof level for a space or patio up there. And in order to do that, then, we're going to protrude with our elevator and accompanying accessory space up. And then we will need an exit down now. So these areas will then exceed our two-story requirement. These two areas are about 15% of the overall footprint. And we've tried to keep those as close to Valley View as we can. So as you look at the massing of this new structure, then, what we're talking about is engaging Valley View and stepping back then as we go north to the residential area. This shows what we intend to do with landscaping. Landscaping will be very similar to what was previously approved. So for the other Edina Flats projects, it will be in keeping with that. However, we are adding more to this area and obviously to enhance what would be our We have looked at some massing along the site here. And you can see from Kellogg, looking back along Valley View, you can see here the stepping that I've described down to the corner point on the north and with the adjacent house. What you see in the foreground here is the New Horizon facility. Again, the look from Valley View, just looking back, you can see, as I described, that our massing then will start on Valley View with the taller areas that we talked about and then step back as you look beyond that.
So can we assume from this that it's slightly shorter than Hope's approved for New Horizons? In that one study? Prior slide?
Mr. Mayor, I would need some help from Mr. Teague here to help us with what was approved on.
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head.
So isn't, if you go back to that prior slide, wasn't that to scale?
Yeah, I believe the New Horizons is 41 feet at the top.
Forty-one?
This is 38.
Oh. Because in both, that prior profile study and this one, it looked like your building was slightly shorter.
That is correct.
Yeah, about three feet.
And your height was loaded towards Valley View?
Yes.
Correct. And this would be the view from Oak Lawn, the residence to the north of our site then. And what we would be doing then to step, again, coming from the Valley View side and north toward the residence at Oak Lawn.
Have you got all four elevations?
Four sites.
For your proposed building? In other words, I want to, what would the single-family neighbor to the north be looking at if this were approved? Do you have that elevation?
So the single-family residents would be looking across at, this would be a roof section over the parking here. And then this would be the second level. So you would, obviously, you'd have some windows and that sort of thing here. Again, this point here would be up at about 20 feet. So you can see how that relates to the single-family residence to the north. Again, the taller components, about 15% of our footprint that we refer to, you could see that here, and that's more toward the Valley View side.
Okay.
And this gives an example here, again, this is just block form, but it starts to give an example of how we could really engage and activate the portion on, from Oak Lawn, where Oak Lawn meets Valley View. There would be a vacation of right-of-way that we would be requesting at this point. We understand that to be similar to what was prior approved for Building One that was prior approved on the site. And so we'd be looking to do that. We feel that we can offer quite a number of improvements to that area as well as maintenance of it. And just in closing, I would just like to say that, again, the design obviously could lend itself very well commercially to, akin to what is going on with Building Two, just a little beyond. But we can also look at other ideas for this. But that would be part of the process if we could get your support this evening that we would enter into. I think the other thing is, that was very helpful for us was, again, the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan, all 81 pages of it. And in looking at that, just seeing some of the objectives and guidelines, bringing, engaging the street, bringing new structures to the sidewalk, those types of things. And also to understand that the existing zoning on this site then would require 35-foot setbacks on the front yard and 25-foot on the sides and rares. So in looking at that and, you know, some of the recommendations of the Small Area Plan, it's understandable to see that those variances have been granted on setbacks. So we would be, again, looking to follow some of those ideas and in turn then would require some consideration on such things as setbacks.
Okay. We lead off, members. Fisher, do you want to start out with your comments?
Yeah, so my question is, you've already got, so if office is on the, call it the second story, and then you have what would be presumably like a deck or something on the, or a patio on the backside so you could step out of the office onto that level? Is that what you're thinking? What would be the roof of the parking?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, we don't have a deck on the north side. So that would not be a, that would not be a deck.
Oh, so it's literally just a roof?
It's a roof, correct.
Okay.
And that is in response to really part of the transition to the neighbor to the north. It is, it does lend itself to a deck, but that would be something that, and we thought about that earlier. But again, just to kind of keep that area, you know, to transition down to there, we thought we would limit that activity.
Okay. Well, I mean, it could lend itself to sort of a green roof type situation where it'd be an amenity for the office. But that probably starts answering my next question, which is if you had that, why would you go through the expense of stair and elevator going up to an upper-level sort of rooftop? And what would be the, what's the idea up there? What's the advantage of doing that, given the extra cost for that much square footage up there?
Well, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, when we're doing these things and we introduce the elevator and we introduce the stair, then it's a matter of an extension or an extra stop to that level. We're already dealing with overruns and things of that nature. So it's just a matter of adding the stop. So the main cost comes in the equipment itself, and adding that stop is a manageable cost to engage the roof structure. It's an amenity. It's something that would be almost boutique-style office-type of space. If you can imagine, for a space like that, again, 4,500 square feet, my office, I think, is about 3,800 square feet and I employ 15 people. So if you can imagine, just even with the occupancy that you have on there, just the number of, you know, folks that might be in 4,500 square feet of a second-floor space. And that upper floor rooftop then becomes kind of amenity for that space. It'll have more features on it that, but, you know, certainly the population on there would be, again, part of the office, you know, or the second-floor occupants.
So do you see, when you look at that chunk, the third-floor chunk of space there that's got an elevator in it, is there other, that's some programmable indoor space up there, though, that would relate to the office?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, that is correct. I mean, there would be just a little bit of accessory space to get up there. So it's essentially an extension of the lobby to get up there. We've got to create the elevator lobby and there would be some sort of accessory space, just a, you know, little huddle space or some sort of informal type of space that transitions you to the deck.
Okay.
Or to the rooftop.
I mean, my thoughts on this are, you know, I, I mean, in an ideal world, I think I like the critical mass of sort of the commercial space closer to the core of Wooddale, you know, where, I think the Small Area Plan was sort of contemplating, have the intensity there and then it gradually filters out. Here, we're kind of, by happenstance, would be creating the opposite where we've got some of the housing now that's built there, and then all of a sudden you get this little commercial piece. While it's not ideal, I don't think it's a deal breaker for me necessarily. It's just not, you know, how I would have imagined it ideally. I think I'm a little concerned about, and I have to, it looks like that parking is sort of a one-way-in, one-way-out, and you're presumably underparked. And I guess the other concern I would have and you'd want to look at is where, you know, when that thing's full, and first of all, how do you find out that it's full? Are you already in it? And how are you getting back out while someone else is coming in behind you and all of that kind of stuff? But just the management of whatever happens here, what does that look like if there is overflow? Does that mean it's up the neighborhood street? You know, what does that all look like? And again, which lends itself more towards, you know, wanting to do this more towards the core of the little business district than starting to filter out to the edges. But those are generally my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Member Sutton?
So I start and end my analysis with the Small Area Plan. We, I've lived through the last four or five years as we've tried to navigate our way without Small Area Plans, and we've put a lot of energy into creating Small Area Plans. And so I am very reluctant to depart from the Small Area Plan. So the Small Area Plan, it seems to me, does contemplate some commercial use. You know, it talks about neighborhood businesses, provide services or goods desired in the neighborhood, including small offices. Maybe this could fit that. It does talk about graceful transitions to the neighborhood. It does talk about two stories and 30 feet, notwithstanding what happened next door, which I actually think never came in front of the council. It was a variance granted by the Planning Commission. I'm going to be reluctant to be departing from that. And I have to say, I'm concerned about the first floor as we're trying to create this pedestrian, neighbor, small node neighborhood kind of feel, that we have an entire first floor that's dedicated to parking. And even if it's screened, it's just not, you know, it's hard for me to imagine how when it's screened, it can provide the kind of interaction or feel like the neighborhood and the building are connecting with one another. And so that's going to be a concern of mine as we move forward as well. So I, you know, I think at the sketch plan, we're just trying to spot issues and tell you the things that are going to be on our radar. And for me, it's really going to be the Small Area Plan and how this is consistent or not with the vision that, you know, the stakeholders in the area came up with and the council agreed to and is really guiding the future going forward.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. So what brings us to this point? Because we have an approved project for this site. So what brings us here?
As I stated at the beginning, the footprint of the approved Building One is essentially identical to Building Two. Building Two was approved for, I believe, 38 feet, three levels, so six units. Building One has four units. The cost to construct the underground parking structure would be substantially similar, given just the amount of engineering, cement, rebar, all of that to support the building. Again, as Ken was saying with that elevator, that infrastructure's in place and going up a level is the most, that last level's the most efficient, right, or most cost-effective. So without having that as part of the plan, and when it was approved, we didn't have a full, you know, structural engineer plan or understand what was going to go into that structure. Obviously, now having built one and looking and knowing what that's going to take for the next one or for doing here, without having those additional two units to spread that cost over, we are not going, we don't anticipate being able to increase the price to make up for that. And rather than come back and ask for some sort of variance to add additional units to that building and to the project, we felt since it was prior a commercial use as the Burley Salon, this would be frankly more amenable to the neighborhood and also avoiding any tip of an underground structure would help make it work better.
Okay. So the footprint is identical to what was approved?
The footprint's not identical to what is approved. We do have a slide here that shows.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get the comparison.
So if you have the setbacks on this page here, the second table, you can see on the east part next to Oak Lawn, we are closer. On the south, on Valley View, we do move somewhat closer by, you know, a foot or two. On the west side, we are, you know, closer by, you know, about eight or nine feet. And then on the north, we actually, just given the, kind of the consistent shape along the north property line, it's all seven feet away. So it is a different and somewhat larger footprint than what was approved.
Yep.
But again, that's all trying to balance getting a workable retail space on the main level and trying to get parking to, even though we're asking for a variance there, trying to minimize that variance.
Okay. Well, this is a small site. I don't have to tell you that. You know that. What is at a premium here is green space. And the, how you manage stormwater by diminishing the amount of green space and creating more hardscape is one of my foremost concerns. So that, that I will want to hear more about. So looking at the north side of this, where you are adjacent to a single-family home, this is not unlike the Gateway Bank on France and about 44th. So the back of the bank, they created an outdoor space with some picnic tables and umbrellas for staff. And we were very concerned about that because they are like a residential lot away from the single-family home that is adjacent. And so, so we're thinking, all right, you are next to a single-family home and you are going to have busyness during the day, not necessarily in the evening so much. But, so when I'm looking at, now I'm looking at your But, so when I'm looking at, now I'm looking at your, your, your plan, bird's eye view of your plan. And so the landscape plan, that's the page I'm looking at, the landscape plan. So on the north, I see a row of little round dots, which are shrubs, I'm assuming. So these need to be taller, in my opinion, because these two uses are different. If this were a single-family home or even a duplex, that you worth considering here, I, I would be okay with, with plantings that are of a smaller nature, but this is a completely different use. And so I would, I would rather see more screening on that north side. The rooftop, I, I would have the same concerns about the rooftop. And, and if, if when employees are using the rooftop and outside, if there are windows on that side of, of that home and those windows were of a private space of that home, I'd want to be really sensitive to that. So, so, and just, you know, kind of imagine the uses, how long somebody's going to be there and what, what kind of protection you can provide for that single-family home that's next door. Because if this, if this were to occur, this is being thrust on them. And, and I would, I want to, I would want to make sure that, that we're protecting their, their privacy and their home. So think with me for a minute about the equipment. Are there, like, you know, the, the elevator has a box on top and the air conditioning, the air handlers, that kind of thing, are those boxes going to be on top? And, and how are you going to shield those and make it decorative to fit into the architecture of the building, which it'll be interesting to see? And how that is going to blend with the rest of the Edina flats, if it is going to complement that? So... Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not excited. I think you have a real challenge with this site. If I were going to do something here, I'd put a single-family home or I would put a couple of, maybe a couple of small ones that, that complement the neighborhood and kind of face, face the same direction as the single-family home that's directly to the north. The, the, I know that it's PCD One and it was a couple of small businesses. If something of that size could go in here, it could be co-working, it could be co-working and some retail, that kind of thing. I'm a real fan of co-working. We don't have a lot of it here. We have one site that's very busy, the Reserve at 77th Street and about Highway 100. There is a demand and it doesn't require multi-levels. It, it really is, it's a great way to introduce a use that will pull people in here to shop at the mall, to eat at the restaurant and to want to be around. And this area is served by transit. It's perfect for that use. So I would, I would encourage you to think about that. I'm going way beyond the small, the sketch plan purpose here. But really, is this the right use? Is this the right thing? My big thing is green space and protecting the single-family home to the north and finding a use that is really going to create an atmosphere for Wooddale and Valley View.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, by the way, tonight. I have, I'd share some of the concerns that you've already heard here tonight. Primarily though, the transition to the north side is a big question mark for me. The plantings, the screening, okay, but mostly it's a block that these people will see. Now, the, the, your patio, your deck, your race deck, I think that that's probably going to get a lot of use. That's what it feels like to me. It feels as if you have a restaurant on the first floor, feels like there's going to be some coming and going there, feels like that's going to have more, a fair amount of activity, whatever retail operations would go in. I'm certain that there's going to be a reception here, a reception there. I think you may have some nighttime events that can happen there as well. So I think that that begins to, it begins to be noticeable in the neighborhood and especially on the north side, I would think. However, your comments on occupancy of your 3,800-foot building with 15 people and stretched on parking, 4,500 feet are going to be a bigger problem. So your shortage on parking there is 15, I believe. If it was one or two, you might say, well, maybe we'll find a workaround. But I think when it's 15, it begins to feel a lot like the Sunnyside proposal with parking. It's just a little difficult, too tight, too narrow, too much. I, and I, I'm certain that you're going to have spill out into the immediate neighborhood. And my guess is, again, on the north side, they're going to take the brunt of that. So, so there's three variances involved in the application and that, it feels like that's a lot. It, it just feels like we've got about 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack there. And I, I think a different approach, and by the way, the business usage to me makes sense. That's what's been done there. And there's no reason not to have ideal office space in there, although as Member Fisher mentions, more acclimated to the other side. I think that, that makes a lot of sense too, so. But again, thanks for being here.
Mr. Remick, you and I talked some time ago about, and remind me, you, you thought about coming back with the idea of six condos there instead of four. I don't know if that's been addressed. At least, would you remind me again why that?
That was...
That was an idea that you didn't think would work. Obviously you'd need another story, but what would that overall height take that building to?
So the 38, the Building Two, which I can, it's in the, we've got a picture of the completed structure, Building Two, here near the end. That's 38 feet, three levels.
38 feet.
Yep.
And so what was the notion there? You want to be 38 feet with an elevator tower. Why not 38 feet with housing?
The feedback we got, both, you know, prior to approaching the planning commission initially and as well as the, the massing and that would be even more, I'm blanking on the right word, but to the neighbor to the north, imposing on the neighbor to the north if you went up a full 38 feet all the way back in that footprint was the thought there, is wanting to avoid that and really keeping the transition as you go from Oak Lawn to Valley View, you know, as, as we've kind of layered out, more of a step up in height rather than just one mass of a building.
I feel like we're really, between the planning commission and here and individual members here, we're really creating confusion for you because when I think about, and I think Member Anderson raised it, important question is what, what is that neighbor to the north, what was, what's the best thing to look at? You know, the, the back of a commercial office building? I mean, he, they had a Burley Hair Salon there before. It was only one story, so they probably looked over the top of it. But if I'm going to look at the back of something from my home, would I rather look at a nice condominium building like the ones you're building a block away or would I rather look at the back of a commercial building with a wall up the first eight feet and then some indeterminate, you know, type of design on, on the backside of it? So think about that. I mean, that, to me, that, that's an important element of this is how do you treat your neighbor? You know, what are they going to look at if, if this were approved? And also with respect to the questions Member Fisher raised or the points he raised, what's the problem with just being able to access the roof by walking up? Is it an ADA issue? Instead of having an elevator, can't somebody on that second floor that's working there, can't they just walk up a few steps and get out on foot so they don't need the elevator? Or is it, is it just an ADA and, you know, accessibility issue?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that would be an accessibility issue.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we do today.
Yeah, all right.
Absolutely.
I'm really concerned too, as Member Anderson stated, about being so significantly underparked. So I don't know, I don't know what's better, you know, like retail, people coming and going, people coming into an office and staying there all day? Are they going to move into the neighborhood and park in the neighborhood if they can't find a place to get into the retail facility? I don't know what the parking ratio is down the street at the corner where Welcyon is. I don't remember if they're underparked or appropriately parked. I don't see a lot of pressure down there. That might be one good thing to take a look at and might alleviate some concerns here, but I've got a concern about being significantly underparked. And when I compare three stories of condominium or six units there that match up well with what you've got up the street just a little bit, you know, just a short distance away, at least when we were working on this before, I liked the idea that those condominiums are kind of marching up the street. So if you think you need to go to office and mixed-use retail office, I'd make sure your architecture is compatible so that you've got that connectivity sort of look to it, I think.
Yeah, no, that would be our, that would be our plan. The, the, with, even Building Two complete exterior, it's been, the design's been well received by...
I feel like I don't know how to give you good guidance on this, it just because it does, it, it does have some problems attached to it just because of the way the site works and the inherent costs of doing whatever it is you're going to do there, whether it's mixed-use office, retail, or it's another, two condominiums on top of the four that you were proposing. I don't know, so.
Mr. Mayor, council members, if I may say, just in going through the small area plan, it does allude to some of the challenges that we speak of this evening that relate to parking, consideration in, in that and looking at overall developments. I think what we're seeing here as well is that when we try to activate the street level and we try to accommodate parking as well, and also parking that calls for buffering and those kinds of things. So the indoor parking structure is a favorable structure, or is a favorable approach to it with the small area plan. And so we're trying to do all these things and, and then at the same time, we're limited with height. So it does call for creativity. It calls for consideration in how we look at it. And I think with some of the comments that we've heard here this evening, for instance, that if we can, we, we are very sensitive to the transition to the residents on the north. And if we can, again, can, you know, look at perhaps even when we talk about the, the rooftop access, is if you can imagine, that would be set back to, you know, away from the north so that it, because the footprint is, is 4,500 square feet. We're not going to have that much roof structure, roof deck up there. It's going to be probably less than half of that. And so that allows us to, again, take the railing and hold it back and again, do some, do some transitioning to the residence.
Yeah, I think that's an important consideration that you, as I mentioned earlier, you tried to load the height towards Valley View and I think that's a good idea. I just think that you need to be really mindful of what, what you do with the backside of it, because it's almost like another front door in a way. I mean, you, you got to really design all the way around the building, but be particularly sensitive to the back and the front.
Correct. And that, that is an opportunity, challenge that we take on. Again, if we have the opportunity to look at that, these are some of the things that we would then delve into and take your comments and, and come back with, with meaningful solutions to it. Absolutely.
All right. Just as another point here, Mr. Remick, I've, I've heard folks that have been on the artisan tour and they say that the condo looks beautiful that you, you're showing or displaying to folks.
Yeah, we're, we're proud of it. Thank you.
Yeah, good, yeah. And I think, is that over now, that artisan tour?
You have one more weekend.
Oh, well, there you go.
Yep.
All right. And sales are coming okay?
Yes, out of the, so the, you have the six units and then going north up Kellogg is three, three-unit buildings, so nine, so 15 total on that Kellogg block. We have four unit, we have four units sold, so.
Four, four sold so far?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other council members that want to add anything else to the conversation? All right, thanks.
I know this is, this is hard to hear us be critical, but thank you, because this is a piece of property that is going to be kind of a gateway, as you've called it, to that Wooddale and Valley View area. So it is very important. It is the first thing they see when they're going west on Valley View. So, so we are, I know we are demanding and we're not always in lockstep in what we say, but, but we're on a journey and, and we'll get there together. So thank you.
We, we do think there's an opportunity to really improve the property in just a couple of sightlines and pictures.
Great.
I, I think there's something that can be done that the neighborhood will appreciate and everybody will be proud of.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Remick. Thank you, Mr. Piper, for coming this evening. All right. The next matter in this portion of the agenda is a, we have every few weeks, accepting grants and donations requires a supermajority. We get gifts to the city and that's embodied this, this meeting in Resolution 2019-47. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to adopt Resolution 2019-47, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? And we've got some wonderful donations in here in this reporting period. Park and Rec, Chris Friedman, very, very generous memorial bench at Williams Park, $3,200 donation. And then the Hennepin County Board, thank you taxpayers of Hennepin County or wherever the funds originated. It's a $60,700 public space recycling grant. And Craft Homes made a nice tree donation for Fred Richards Park. And then as both Member Brendel, Member Staunton, as members of the Crime Prevention Fund, note, no, there's a $31,950 K-9 memorial donation that passed through the Crime Prevention Fund, you know, onto the city police department. So thanks to all those donors, very, very special gifts. All right, we're on to...
We're going to, we're going to accept that.
We got to vote. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? I thought we'd done that. Thank you. Next, on to correspondence petitions. And we had the report on metro transit. I don't know if that required any supplemental comment. It was informational only?
That was information only.
Are we going to be asked at some point to weigh in on that or?
It's a preliminary.
Yeah, this is preliminary. They see that most of the route has been determined and there's three alternatives in Edina. Andrew Scipione's on the TAC, working with that group. It's a good question. I don't know for sure if they're going to seek resolution of support from the council as they work through it, but I can find out for you.
Yeah, it seems like an important issue as we're having a lot of things unfolding with, whether it be 50th and France, the discussion that Assistant City Manager Schaefer replied to the comment we had at the last meeting about, you know, how are we going to get people around? But at the same time, I think the Xerxes Avenue side of, you know, the, the community is an important one to have access on to, so I, I think it's really important for us to stay with that.
Yeah, good comment. I think around the metro area, as we've seen the success of some of these arterial bus rapid transit projects, you know, ridership on the A Line over on Snowing Avenue up by 50% because of the use of bus rapid transit over there. So to see the metro transit folks looking at our area as a potential E-line bus rapid transit project is really heartening to see. So thank you, Member Staunton, for that. Any correspondence, Assistant City Manager Schaefer, other than what's on the dais this evening? Any correspondence, Assistant Manager Schaefer, other than what's on the dais this evening?
None.
And that we receive through regular correspondence? Okay, thank you. Aviation noise update, Member Brindle, anything to report there?
Thank you, a couple of things. In July, there are two aviation noise-related events, meetings. Wednesday, July 17th is the regular noise oversight committee meeting at 1:30 at Metropolitan Airport Commission Office on 28th Avenue. The following Wednesday, July 24th, the MAC will host a listening session in Edina at the Southwest Metro Public Safety Training Facility on the Braemar Sports Campus. It will start at 7 o'clock. And just a quick note, we had, I don't know that I can really go far, as far as saying we celebrated, but we did announce that the MD-80s and 90s had left our market, those being the loudest aircraft. And American Airlines is announcing that they're going to serve our market with MD-80s and 90s. So we're going to hope to go back to, to the drawing board and say, um, we were successful at getting those out of here, and so we'll work with American Airlines and see what we can do. The airlines are clients of the MAC and, and so to the degree that we can, we can implore them to not have us go backwards on the progress that we're making on aviation noise, so possibly, what I'm hoping is, these are old airplanes, so their life is going to be short. But, you know, we, we were successful at getting them out of here, so I'm hoping that we can do that again. So those are my comments.
Good, thank you. Mayor and Council comments, Member Anderson, would you like to lead us off?
Yeah, thank you. Earlier this evening, I was at the Vegetated Buffer Open House over at Roslyn Park and had the opportunity to meet our new Park and Rec Director there. And it was interesting to take a good look at the, at the presentations, how that might go. I think most, if not all, of our council had a, had an opportunity to walk that site over there, take a good look at it. So we'll have a lot to think about and consider as that goes forward, I'm certain. But it was, it was very interesting and good use of time, and especially to meet our new director.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Okay, I've got a couple of things, as usual. I was not here for the June 4th council meeting. Thank you for plugging ahead. I was in, I was attending the Rotary International Convention in Hamburg, Germany. It was a great time. Did some Rotary every day and did some Hamburg every day. There were about 25,000 Rotarians and their families there and, which is actually a moderate number of Rotarians attending an international convention. And Hamburg did itself proud. It, it's a wonderful city. It's an, it's an industrial city. It has a port, it has a seaport. The people are very, very nice. If you are looking at a map and you're sort of doing this and this, they will just come up and say, can I help you? And, and that happened numerous times, but it's a lovely city. Just another congratulations and shout out to Sergeant Kevin Raffedall and Detective Joel Moore on receiving this year's Officer of the Year awards. This is unique that we awarded two officers, and it actually made the Crime Prevention Fund step back and look at this because we had nominations for officers that had already received the award. And we said, um, how do we feel about this? We hadn't said that we would, what we would do if there was a repeat. And as it happens, what we did was, we went out to the community and tried to get some more nominations, and what we did was, the staff in the police department was adamant that that, they wanted to nominate Joel Moore. And the community then came forward and the community at large, several people came forward and nominated Sergeant Raffedall. So that made it kind of a, a two-way approach that really makes it more meaningful, I think, that we have community voices in there as well. So, so I'm thrilled. Let's see. Ah, so there was something that came across that there's water main work that has to be done in the area of Valley View Road and Doran Lane. And this is a neighborhood that has seen a road reconstruction project that went on a long time. Because sometimes, and Director Milner can expound on this a bit, you get into the ground and it's a whole lot worse than you thought it was when it wasn't opened up. And, and there was a lot more work to do, I think, in, in that project than was anticipated. And it involved the roundabout, it involved moving utilities. But, but would you talk about this particular project, please, and how it's going to be handled?
Yeah, in the last few years, we, like you said, around the roundabout and that neighborhood, we, we did the water main within the street or the right of way that needed to be done. The contract you approved tonight or the request for purchase that you approved on consent is to line water main pipe underneath Highway 62. So we learned about that last June, July, and didn't have time to spin up a special project that's a special contractor to do lining. So there'll be a pit and it's going to be in the boulevard. We got an approval from one of the residents to dig in their yard, so we don't have to touch that. The street that's new on the south side of the highway and the street that's new on the north side, so both areas, we're digging in the grass areas. They'll insert a liner and repair that water main, make it structurally sound for another 100 years, so we don't have to worry about a break happening underneath Highway 62, as we've seen in some other areas around the loop in the metro with water main breaks.
Great, thank you. Because, yeah, the, the frontage roads on both sides are brand new. Yeah, that's right. And finally, my last one is, I've been hearing from folks how they love Braemar Golf Course. And I've been hearing from folks how they would love to play golf at Braemar, but they can't get on. So I actually, I spoke with Bob Seeger, who is one of the starters at the golf course. And he said, you know, if, if, if a twosome wants to come on, we'll work them in. Just tell them to come and we'll work them in. So I was happy to hear that. If there's a foursome, they'll probably split them into two twosomes to try and get them in. But, but one of the challenges is that you've got a pent-up demand for this course and you've got over 1,000 player cards, you've got leagues that are full, maybe more full than they were before the new golf course, and you've got events that are excited to be hosted at Braemar. So, so if you are a foursome and are willing to be two twosomes, you can probably get on. And it's exciting to have the restaurant open, serving pub-style menu. We've eaten there a couple of times and I would highly recommend it. So I'm very happy with Braemar.
Thank you. Member Staunton?
Just one comment on Member Brindle's comment. I think that's a great thing. That's what we were looking for, is high demand. Back to the days when you need a patron card to get on, and it's terrific that it's being that successful. My only other comment is I want to thank Councilmember Brindle for her work as the catalyst on the rental housing licensing ordinance that we've adopted tonight. I have to say, I was with some others as being a skeptic of that. You were the starting point of that, so you deserve credit for continuing to push that boulder up the hill and persuading the rest of us that it was the right thing. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Fisher?
All right, I'm going to jump on the bandwagon of thanking Councilmember Brindle. Thank you for doing the interviews of our student commission members. That was much appreciated.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
And you obviously put a lot of care into it, so thanks for that. The only other thing I would share is, as with Councilmember Anderson, I went over to Roslyn Park earlier before the work session. And just another reminder how great our staff are, just to watch them working with the community, both there and, you know, at our work session, you know, doing the heavy lifting on all these projects and, and I'm just very proud of, of our staff. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for that observation. A couple little housekeeping things for me. I had a call from one of our residents today, said, who's responsible for landscaping at the Grandview Library? Because he said there's a lot of dead plant material over there. Looks, he said it looks quite ratty. So I don't know, maybe you can follow up on that. I don't know, it's, it's a building co-owned between us and the county. I don't know who's responsible for landscaping, but there needs to be some improvement over there. And then there's some general exterior maintenance work that needs to be done as well. The other question this person raised was, you know, we, we've done a good job of getting construction workers to park over at the old public worksite. And now a lot of those folks are gone, but there's still a shortage of on-street parking near the library. This person thought it was being taken over by construction workers that were doing some stucco work on one of the buildings. So I don't know if we can find out if that's accurate, and if so, get in touch with the contractors doing that work and encourage them to get down and use the public worksite as well, because this person's point was, there's quite a few people that have difficulty along that street up by the BP station, you know, being able to walk very far. And so it'd be nice if we could free up some of those parking spots that are now occupied by pickup trucks and people working in the area all day. The other thing they raised for the Traffic Safety Review Committee was, take a look at these, whether or not we need to make 59th and Kellogg a four-way stop. It's only a two-way, and there's been a couple near misses and a, quite a dandy accident that pushed a relatively new Audi, apparently that blew through a stop sign up into a yard, hit by the car on the, on the through movement. And then this person's also been mindful of the fact that, you don't know about this one, the, the pork chop, the raised island at Oaklawn, I think it's at Oaklawn 62nd. He said, no truck, no bus can make that turn without driving through the yards or over the top of that little pork chop. And whether that should stay or go is something that probably should be analyzed. And then, like Member Brindle, I was, thank you for managing well in our absence. I got invited to the Yale Mayor's College, and that was on the 4th of June as well, and they held it in New York City at the Yale Club, which was, which is their base in New York City, and interestingly, built on the site where Nathan Hale was hanged. A little bit of historical trivia there. And we touched on a lot of different elements. There were 36 mayors there that were invited by Yale. Yale paid for all of us to come, put us up, fed us, and there was no taxpayer money involved whatsoever. So we, 36 mayors from across the country covered issues of economic development, crisis management. We had lessons from the front lines, from the mayor of El Paso, who's in the center of the immigration crisis, you know, talked at length about the fact that it's been 30 years since anything's been done on immigration. He's the mayor of a town that sees tens of thousands of people moving back and forth across the border daily for work purposes. The mayor of Huntington, West Virginia, which was ground zero for the opioid crisis, lost many, many of their residents in a town the size of Edina from that event. And then I ended up sitting next to the mayor from Santa Rosa, California during that session. And of course, they were the victims of that Tubbs fire two years ago, and they lost 3,000 houses in their community, and they've only been able to replace 300 of them. They've lost 3,000 people from their town. And we talked about the challenges there, because there were so many houses that were underinsured, and then so many people that didn't qualify for FEMA assistance. So they've had this meager 10% replacement of housing over the past two years, and not sure what they're going to do there. So it was a really fascinating meeting. And then the next day, they sprinkled all of the mayors into the CEO summit that they have twice a year at the New York Public Library. And that was interesting too, as we touched on issues of geopolitics, crisis management there as well, using Wells Fargo and Boeing as examples. Chief executives and executives from both those companies present, talk a lot about housing, housing dilemmas. We had, just wanted to take a quick look here at the library, some of the folks that were involved. And incidentally, we had a banquet the night after the mayor's meeting at the Yale Club, and they gave a Maverick and Leadership Award, they called it, but it was really a Courage and Leadership Award, to Ed Stack, who is Chairman and CEO of Dick's Sporting Goods, who, you remember after the Parkland shooting, said, we're not going to sell automatic weapons anymore. And he's had to have bodyguards ever since Dick's made that decision. So that was quite eye-opening. And another person from IBM got an award the next day at the, at the CEO summit. And that was also a very, very interesting conversation to be part of. So one more thing on my agenda, we had a meeting upstairs, our work session upstairs dealt with, and staff, Chad, you did a wonderful job upstairs, I think, explaining to the Dublin Circle neighborhood, I'll call it, and, and us as well, from a reminder standpoint, you know, an updating of information standpoint, the reason we were doing generational infrastructure planning around water treatment. And talked about the various things that we'd looked at in terms of locations for that, that sighting of any water treatment plants. And I think it came down to a couple of locations, looking at Dublin Circle, which is right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and also talking about that location that we had discussed for quite a while at, on France Avenue, right near the water tower. And I think you, you asked for direction, and we, we gave you unanimously direction that what we wanted you to do was to pursue water treatment plant expansion studies with us on the expansion at the Southdale site. And specifically, we talked, I think, about Option 1E, what, keeping the plant at the original size, and then looking at some architectural options on the exterior. So, and, and not pursuing any further the notion of any water treatment plant expansion at the Dublin Circle site. That's separate from the issue of whether or not we need to do something with respect to the storage capacity that we have up there, or the, or streamlining or improving that, the way we manage that water in the storage, in the storage unit. So I was thinking that I would, you know, like us to move on this matter, and I think everybody else was thinking the same way. So someone wanted to make a motion directing staff to pursue water treatment plant expansion possibilities at the Southdale site, and specifically look at Option 1E with the plant as originally conceived in size at that location. I think it's on Option 1C, if memory serves me right, and no longer pursue any water treatment plant expansion at the Dublin Circle site. I would entertain a motion of that effect.
It was Option 1E, just to make sure.
1E, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I don't recall unanimity on what to do at the Southdale site, but I do recall unanimity to abandon efforts to put a treatment plant at the Dublin Circle site.
I think that's the intent of the motion, is.
Well, I'm responding to the motion, to the portion of the motion that says on the same size, because I don't think we got that far down.
Right.
Okay.
The track, so.
So let me restate the motion, and I think your, your advice is well taken. Motion directing staff to pursue water treatment plant expansion possibilities at the Southdale site, and no longer pursue any water treatment plant expansion possibilities at the Dublin Circle site?
I would make that motion.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? All right, we had some folks from the neighborhood. Stick around, thank you for staying around tonight, and thank you for coordinating everything with respect to your neighborhood. It was a very, it was the most civil of conversations, so, and we appreciate that. All right. That's it for my comments, and now we're on to Assistant Manager Schaefer for her comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few comments. One, including in your packet, is a legislative report that was prepared by Management Fellow Casey Casella, and that is for information only, so please let City Manager Neil or I know if you have further questions after today. We will have city offices closed on Friday, July 5th. Offices and enterprises will be open as they are on any holiday schedule, so all of our enterprises will be open, but as far as service to the. our enterprises will be open, but as far as service to the public, the, the front desks at City Hall and the Police Department and Public Works will be closed, and we sometimes do this on what would be light customer traffic days, so that we have employees then choose to either work on the projects that is, are difficult to get done when the offices are open for business, or they use their crude paid time off, and in either case, it's good for us, because we're either buying down paid time off, which makes the finance director incredibly happy, or we're catching up on projects on a lighter-than-normal day. And you received from me a reminder about the elected official showcase at the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility, that is a mouthful, so just a reminder, if you are able to attend either of those sessions, to make sure to let Jen Garskey know that. And then, my last item is actually, wanted to share some good news that we received today. Our former City Management Fellow, Shantay Mitchell, who was the Management Fellow right before Casey, has accepted a position with Brooklyn Park, and so she will be their Management Systems Coordinator, which is very similar to what other cities might call a management analyst in their city administration department, and she starts on July 1st.
Oh, fantastic news.
Well, congratulations to her.
Thank you for sharing that. All right, good. That prompted anyone else to think of anything else they wanted to share with the council?
Uh, just that we have one council meeting in July and not two, so the first Tuesday in July is July 2nd, we will not be meeting at that time. Our only council meeting in July will be July 16th.
Can I just share one other thing I forgot to mention during my comments? When I was on a trip to the Jerry's Grocery Store the other day, I stopped to look at the freshly landscaped and sidewalked Avidor and the stoops that face out toward the Super America, and it's looking very nice down there, and I could stand in the parking lot of Jerry's and see the path that someone could walk from the library and, and the Grandview Square buildings up to Jerry's, so I think there's great progress happening there.
And they still have to put the flashers in, across...
Yes.
So, the flashers...
To get people across, because you can see how you'd want to cross there.
Yep, and they're working with Jerry's on a railing kind of deal right at their parking lot, yeah.
Very nice.
Couple things to come.
But it's looking good.
Great.
That also reminds me that I had an email from Kelly Doran regarding Aria at 66th and York, and if anyone would like to see that, he kind of extended an open invitation, and they could coordinate getting folks in to see that if they wanted to. And I want to get in to see the Avidor, too, and that we should be able to accomplish fairly quickly. All right, I think that concludes our, our business from a council standpoint. Stick around momentarily, we've got some quick HRA work to do, so the council meeting stands adjourned.
They have to have time to get the next...
Okay, all right, all right, let me know.
Oh, yeah, we got to roll the credits, sir.
They don't take me long.
That was it.
Mr. Mayor, only ten minutes behind, pretty good, pretty good for a new guy.
We're not having a meeting on Thursday?
We are having a meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, we are, even though we're having this one.